A regular meeting of the Charter Township of Garfield Township Board with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Anne, can we have a roll call, please?
Schmuckel?
Here.
Acosta Nelly?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
Lap?
Here.
Laney McManus?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
And Joe McManus?
Here, thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is public comment. We have a public comment at the beginning and at the end of each meeting, so at this point, we will open up public comment if anybody has anything they'd like to come forward and state. It's just your name and address for the record. I don't see anybody running up to do that, so we'll go ahead and close public comment, move on to review and approval of the agenda, and then if there's any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to state those. Denise?
No.
Are you going to abstain from that?
Oh, I thought I would abstain from it when I did it.
Hmm? No, you should state it ahead of time, so.
I am going to abstain from 7A. I didn't know I had to do it at that point in time.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No objections?
We have no objections. We had to make sure that we have no objections.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to her abstaining? She's a resident of that road and is in that special assessment district, so thought would be appropriate she abstain from that. No objections, we'll accept that abstention. Any other conflicts?
Motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing done, all in favor of this by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therfrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have Minutes, May 27, 2025, regular meeting, recommend approval. Fills from the general fund, $14,708.22, recommend approval. Consideration of change order number two, final, for Moline Excavating for Copper Ridge Trailhead, recommend approval. Consideration of contractors' application for payment number two for Moline Excavating for Copper Ridge Trailhead, recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Is there any item that anyone on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any staff items would like to have removed?
No.
Any items the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Hearing done, would entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Support.
Motion made and supported to adopt the consent calendar. Any further discussion on that? Anne, could you call a roll on that, please?
Acosta Nelly?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Ellen McManus?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right, since we didn't remove any items, move on to correspondence. I'm not sure, Chris, you want to make any comments?
So, that's the Road Commission update report that I just got, I think it was yesterday. And then the Health Department had asked for us to communicate the letter regarding the septic inspections. So I just wanted you to be aware of what's going on, so that's why I provided it.
Okay. Any questions on those? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to reports, and first is the assessing report for spring 2025.
Good evening, Polly Cairns, Township Assessor. I just wanted to kind of give you a brief update of what's going on in the department and where we are for the new year. Also, I was supplied some information. We have 71 of the 71 permits that we have, 21 are commercial, and the remaining are residential. So, staff is out in the field doing new construction and verifying property record cards, and we're just plugging along. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions for Polly?
Thank you.
Thanks, Polly.
Thank you.
All right. County Commissioner, I do not see our County Commissioner, or either one of them tonight, or any one of the three, I guess we have. So we'll move on to the Sheriff's Report.
Good evening, Roy Raska, Sheriff's Department. For the month of May, Sheriff's Department wrote 137 citations in Garfield Township. We had one fatality in the township. Seven injury accidents were reported, 57 property damage accidents, 12 drunk driving arrests were made, 67 criminal arrests were made over the month. Just some of the events that guys took part in. We had two community police officers do a scam presentations at the Village of Bay Ridge. That was pretty well received. Deputy Hunter still taking part in sobriety court, I think he's just getting up and running with that. And he's been working closely with the Parks Division with the encampments and helping get things cleaned up in some spots. Kind of given the task of the speed signs to Deputy Rosa, so if there's any specific areas, you can either get that to me or go direct with Deputy Rosa. Deputy James Hunter attended the YMCA Senior Palooza with the sheriff, I guess that was well received also. Right now, we are down one deputy in the township, and I have someone that has interest to come to the township and work Team Two, so she will be assigned to the team with Cole Rosa. She'll work the nine-to-seven spot. That'll be Mariah Ebenhart, and hopefully, we can pull her from the general schedule here in the next two weeks. So you'll see Mariah Ebenhart out here very soon. The one fatality that occurred was the motorcycle that collided with a pickup truck at South Airport, and veterans still open and being investigated. We did interviews last week, because Detective Travis Horn, if you know him, he retired. Brad Kirkpatrick just retired two weeks ago, and Tony Romanowski's retiring at the end of this month. The good thing was, is we just had two certified police officers that were with other departments just applied, and they both really interviewed well, so hopefully, they'll be plug-and-play the next few weeks, so. Any questions?
I have one, Roy. When you said that we were down one person in Garfield Township, is there somebody else covering for that? Or is it left vacant, because we're paying for it?
I guess at this point, it's kind of left vacant, even though we have to fill in because of the calls, we just have to fill in with the general county cards. So no one specifically named on the schedule right now.
Because we're paying for that person, so we're paying for somebody not to be there.
Someone will always takes the calls, but they're pulled from the county to come in to the township. And Mariah will be there full-time in the next couple of weeks.
Any other questions, Roy?
Thanks.
Thanks, Roy. All right, Metro Fire.
Good evening, Paul Mackin, Metro Fire. In your packet, you should have our incident report. Starting with the first page is our GT Mesa Enfer's incidents for May of 2025. As usual, we have the incident types listed, and then we have the column for Garfield incidents versus the overall Metro totals. Our highest call volume or incident type is EMS as usual, and assisting EMS crews. We've got 229 incidents within Garfield for the month of May, and 304 for Metro, followed by other emergency medical services at 60 and 77, and then dispatch canceled en route at 29 and 47. As you kind of drop down, it's customary that we kind of get down to where we have the one-off types of incidents. You can see there. But the grand total for the month were 376 incidents within the township and 521 within Metro. Moving to page two is our EMS complaints, a little more detail on that, the priority types, one, two, and three, three being our non-emergent calls. Falls continue to lead with 77 within the township and 102 within Metro, followed by cardiac issues or chest pain at 29 within the township and 37 within Metro. 28 is difficulty breathing, and you can see the comparative 34. Unknown problems, person down, typically if somebody's down having an emergency and we don't have that data, it'll come in that way with 26 within the township. You can see the other different complaint types as you kind of work through the list, but the total of those EMS incidents were 335 within the township and 445 within Metro. Moving to our pie charts, on the next page are May incident totals, broken down by township. The total again for the month was 521, down just a few, 527 was the total in April, so we're just down a little bit. The Garfield Township had 72%, which we also had in April at 72% with 376 of those incidents. East Bay with 90 and 17%. There was a 1% increase in that percentage over last month. Acme was also 1% increase to 9%, and our out-of-area calls at 10, the percentage remained at 2% as it did in April. Our incidents by station, those percentages are kind of very similar. Station 12, I'll start on the left, was 137 incidents. It was at 26%, so that's up. Station 12 is up from last month. Last month, we were at 23% and 124 incidents. Station 11 is at 28%, again, down from its 31% last month, and we had 166 incidents out of that station last month. Station 9 is actually up, or I'm sorry, it's down a percent as well with 38 incidents and 7%. Station 11 remained at 11, or I'm sorry, Station 8 remained at 11% with 59, and Station 1 is down from 142 calls from last month, and it was at 27%, so we're down a percent. Overall, looking at the station responses versus the incident types, again, you can see that side-by-side that we added for the calls assigned to those stations and the actual responses. Station 1 is down from the previous month. Station 8, again, down from the previous month. Station 9 is actually up from April. 11 is down and 12 is up. So just a little bit of the change, overall, just a few decreases overall from last month. Moving on just to some of the things that are going on within the organization, we're conducting promotional testing currently to establish eligibility lists. We don't have any openings for our officers right now, but we're going to establish those lists. So three of our firefighters took a written exam on Monday for the lieutenant's exam, and then five of our current lieutenants are scheduled to take a written exam for captain on June 16. Successful candidates are going to participate in a structured interview, and then they'll be placed on their respective list, which should be valid for about two years. So we'll have those lists until 2027, in anticipation of any openings that we may have or any opportunities. We did post just recently a notice of the upcoming recruitment for our Plans Examiner Inspector position. As I may have previously mentioned, Kathy Fordice is going to be retiring at the end of October, so that recruitment's going to begin next month with a plans to tentatively fill that in either the end of September, beginning of October, just to have a little bit of a transition period. So, taking steps to get that ready. We wanted to get the word out there now to allow an opportunity for people to consider it. I had mentioned at a previous meeting about an ambulance pending policy that was being discussed within the county and the area EMS directors. That policy was to allow the opportunity, if the ambulances were tied up and there was a request at a healthcare facility, that they'd be able to pin that Priority Three type call, it's something that's non-emergent, for up to 20 minutes to allow that ambulance to be freed up from the hospital and respond. So that has tentatively been approved by everyone. It was approved by Medical Control. There's going to be one last review by Medical Control, so we expect that to go into effect in June. Within Metro, there's 15 facilities that would be affected by that. All 15 are within Garfield Township, so I've had correspondence with all those facilities. They're aware of it. A couple of questions from some of them, most of them were, you know, appreciative of just being informed about it. It doesn't seem like there's any concerns with it. So, again, that's going to be a temporary policy. We'll evaluate it after about six months and kind of get some data on it and see how that's working. So, that should be going into effect sometime this month. Couple of other things, we did apply for the Grand Travers Ban 2% application. We applied for a dual fire patient transport skid for one of our two cabotia units. We actually have three. We have a third one that's specifically set up for patient transport and two set up for exclusively fire. The skid units on there, on the two fire units are about 30 years old, so we applied for a dual unit. So essentially, it would give us that dual functionality of one of those fire units. Maybe in the future, if we upgrade one of the other ones, it would get us in a position where two of them are both patient transport and fire, so we could potentially reduce our fleet, maybe get rid of the third one if we didn't need it. So, we did ask Tribe for support with that. It's the request, it's a 14,000 and change skid. We did pledge 15%, so hopefully, we can get some support from the Tribe on that, especially with all the wildland and rural areas that we do cover with that. We also did get notification that the Safer Grant applications are out. That closes July 3. We do intend to submit an application for that. The administration's been working on our fiscal year '26 budget. We're actually going to be discussing a draft with our Finance Committee this Thursday, and then tentatively present to our full board at the next meeting. At this point with the draft, we're pretty happy with the work that's been put in by the administration. Feel pretty good with the budget, tentative budget that we'll present, covers, addresses all of our current needs. We had some equipment requests in there, things that we need to continue to address our apparatus replacement plan and schedule that we're doing there, look at the future for staffing, and then also begin to address some of the facility needs that we've identified in a facility assessment that we'll be reporting to our board. So, all in all, we seem to be pretty happy with that, but we're going to present that to our Finance Committee, which I know there's members of present, so that's upcoming. Also, we'll be preparing, we do have our ISO Public Protection Classification Evaluation Visit scheduled for August 15th, so we're getting that data together, getting that submitted to them, so hopefully, we'll have a successful evaluation with that. Just in other note, we did attend, our administrative staff and our honor guard attended the Northwest Regional Training Center Fire School graduation last Tuesday. It was one of the largest ceremonies attended that they've had yet, so it was a full-packed house, a lot of graduates. Three of the graduates have applied and are either members of our organization when they started school or have applied, so we'll have three of them attending a part-time orientation with us next week. That's a 40-hour training of just, you know, getting orientated to Metro Fire. At the completion of that, they are certified, so then they would be eligible to work part-time shifts for us, so. That completes my report, and be happy to answer any questions.
No questions?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Excuse me, Planning Department report for June.
Good evening, John Syke, Planning Director. You have our monthly report in your packet. I just wanted to make five highlights. There are a couple items, the Planning Commission meets tomorrow evening. There are a couple items on their agenda that we expect to come forward to the board at an upcoming meeting. There's the rezoning at 306 West Hammond Road. This is for a, it's the scussel rezoning, it's actually a down zoning from conditional general commercial to agriculture. That's, the Planning Commission is seeing findings of fact tomorrow, and we expect them to forward it to the board for consideration. There's also some zoning ordinance amendment changes, basically to provide a definition for substantial construction and update our lighting standards. So a public hearing is going to be held by the Planning Commission tomorrow evening, and that we'll be expecting to come forward to the board for consideration as well. I did want to mention a couple items that are not in the report but are on the agenda for the Planning Commission tomorrow. One is for the redevelopment of the former Macy's site that was recently purchased by Lormac Stern, so they're redeveloping that. It will involve, the building itself is roughly about 86,000 square feet. They're looking to subdivide it into four retail units. They will also be adding some bays at the north end for delivery, for truck deliveries and so forth. They will also be, they're proposing to seal it off or cut it off from the mall itself. So as you may or may not know, the mall itself is under various ownership. There's the, kind of the internal parts of the mall is owned by Brookfield, but Target and the former Macy's site are owned separately. So the Macy's site is the building itself plus about eight acres around there. They are also looking to do a drive-through restaurant as an outlot, similar to, let's say, the Starbucks that's located there. At this point, they're introducing it to the Planning Commission, so I don't expect action on that tomorrow, but it will be additional site plan work needed to be done for that application. It has, fortunately to us, has got some interest to revisit the proposed private drive connection between Lowe's and Grand Travers Mall. So, the operator at Chick-fil-A has reached out to Lormac Stern and started that conversation, and so some of that will hopefully get moving. We've had some of that stalled because of the current ownership of the mall, but with some of this changeover in ownership, I think we can get that back on track. The other item is, on tomorrow night, is the former Big Lots, which Aeropark LLC is looking to put an indoor trampoline facility. They're looking at using roughly about 25,000 square feet, so there will be remaining about 7,000 square feet of the former Big Lots that will stay as retail business. Then the fifth item I just wanted to mention, there's in the last item, bullet item in the report, is the discussion that staff had with Planning Commission at its study session last month regarding some corridor planning for South Airport. At this point, it's just a discussion, it's a discussion I'd like to have with the board at an upcoming meeting, but there are no formal plans, so despite what you might read in the ticker, at this point, it's a conversation that's just starting, so. That's all I have on the report. Any questions?
Any questions for John? Sounds like you're busy over there in planning, anyway.
Yeah, keeping busy.
All right, that's good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, the Parks and Rec report, I see it in writing, is just being submitted in writing tonight? Okay, thank you. Clerk's report?
I've submitted the clerk's report in writing, if anybody has any questions. Last week, Betty and I went to Clerk's Conference. The Bureau of Elections was there, reiterating that in 2026, our equipment leases will be up. It'll be 10 years we've had on our equipment, and recommended that we purchase all new equipment. And there will be probably no funds from the state to do that. They're suggesting we set aside at least $30,000 per precinct, and that's including my high-speed tabulator, which is definitely needed with the number of absentee ballots we have. Those run 60,000 to 80,000.
Wow.
And the state does not plan on helping us with any of the money, but requiring us to update and get new equipment.
So almost $300,000?
Mm-hmm. So we'll need to plan for that in our budget session, and once it's required, I don't have an option. I have to buy, and I have, and I have to have it for all my precincts. We all have to have the same equipment in Grand Travers County because it's supported by the county clerk, all of the software is done at the county clerk's office, we all have to have the same equipment. You can't use 10-year-old equipment with this new software. All the equipment is, you know, updated with better security and all of that supposedly, but that's what they're telling us, so it's coming down. Some of the one vendor in the state says, oh, I think we should, could use it for a few more years, but the state's saying no, so we'll see how it goes.
Question for you on that, is, are all of the townships in Grand Travers County in the same boat?
Oh, yes, everybody. Every township, city, and the state of Michigan will be in the same boat. They'll have three vendors, I think, maybe possibly four, we get to choose our vendor, but they're all saying they're going to be roughly $30,000 a precinct.
Sounds like price fixing.
Yeah. Well, any opportunity for getting all the townships in Grand Travers County to come in and say, we'll all buy from this vendor?
We have to.
Can we get a better deal?
Grand Travers County all has to have the same vendor, because we're all supported by the county clerk.
Yeah.
And they, you know, got to set it up, all of our, all the election on our little thumb drives, we load it into our machines, they all have to be the same equipment.
Can you bid it out as a group?
As a group, it's bid out as a group, I'm sorry.
Same vendor or just the same equipment?
Same vendor. It all has to be the same vendor for the state of Michigan, for Garfield, for Great Travers County.
Who makes the call on which vendor?
Well, generally, the county clerk does, but Bonnie, we, the last time we had to bid, it'll be 10 years in 2026, so in '16, we brought all the vendors in, and the clerks, the deputy clerks reviewed, they did presentations for all of it, and we all sat down, and we all agreed on the same vendor. So Bonnie gives us a choice.
I guess to Molly's point, is there any negotiation there, that, okay?
The state negotiates price for us, but it's going to be the same price for everybody.
Yeah.
Some vendors are a little more, some are a little less, you have to purchase our tabulators and our motor assist terminals, you have to have both in every precinct. And then, next year, I'm going to need new laptops for each of my precincts, because that, they go into Windows 11, they have to have certain, to meet the standards of the electronic poll book, and so I can get those next year, and then the following year, I'll have to get the new equipment. Yeah, it's a lot.
Elections are expensive.
Elections are very expensive, and they change, the everything, the rules change per year sometimes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's why I had to talk about that in our budget, about setting aside money for elections the next couple of years.
Well, thanks for the warning, I guess.
Yeah.
Warning, yeah.
Any questions?
Before I jump ahead to Chris, I want to go back a step, if you indulge me, I meant to mention, you know, the Parks Report's in writing, but in talking to the staff and different people, it sounds like with some good weather and playground being down, the River East is a hit right now. It's been just absolutely packed, I guess, anytime, different people have gone over there. It's not even done yet, and the whole parking lot and outhouses, we ain't told we got a restroom in, but as you, when it was all developed, like you all expected, it was, you know, I wasn't here when you guys put that one in, but it looks like it's going to be well-received, well-used, so, already. Anyway, Chris, Managers' report.
All right, just an update, our township flag, I received some high-quality artwork from our vendor who designed it, and that was passed on to Britton Banners and Base Supply down south in Blair Township, to give me some quotes on what it would cost for the handmade version and a screen-printed version. So I will be buying probably a screen-printed version for outside, four-by-six, and then a five-by-three handmade here, so it's a little more special, and then an American flag with the yellow lacing around it, and then a, you know, two different poles, one with a, like a spear top and an eagle for the American flag. with a, like a spear top and an eagle for the American flag. So, that's the plan, just kind of waiting on prices from those two vendors. We are in the, I guess we're at the beginning of planning for our budget for next year, had a manager meeting on Wednesday and told the staff to start thinking about future expenses, you know, software, training, capital expenses that they feel that they may need for twenty-six. We'll be distributing our, our current budget and where we're at with that for their planning and I think the goal will be to, in August, to start our budget discussions with a plan to be done September-ish. So, in that, the CIP comes into that as well, we've been working on that, we've been discussing that. What we, the planning commission will get that in, in June this month and what we'd like to do is bring it to the, a draft version to the board, the first meeting in July, and the board can decide, you know, do you, do you want to adopt it in the, the end of July? Do you want to have a study, a special study session just to talk about that? So, I kind of get to thinking of how you want to handle it at the end. And, you know, the, you know, the plan director I have talked, this is just a guide. It's, it's, it's fluid. You can move things up and down it as priorities change, it's just a guide to, to plan and budget for the future. So, just kind of keep that in mind. Quote of liquor license, high tops finally applied for that quota that we assigned them. We just recently got that notice, thank you for passing it along. So, it's really at this point, the liquor control will assign it to them because we approved that back in February. So, that'll help out what we talk about a little bit later with K-1. And we still have some SDMs that are there for quota, but those aren't as hot a commodities as Class Cs and B hotels and stuff like that. Finalizing the support of the GT County Urban Emergency Operations Plan and the plan is on June twenty-fourth to bring that to you for approval and adoption, and then Greg Barrett, our emergency manager, will be here as well. Through that process, I found that some, there should be some text changes to our ordinance, which again will require the public hearing. So, I won't be able to have it at that same time, it'll be a little bit down the road. And it's just kind of matching up titles within our ordinance to match up the EOP. So, just some technical cleanup stuff. Our human resource company is, actually, we're doing the work right now, our, our staff is putting together their job duties and we are comparing them to job descriptions and making recommendations to the HR company, what we'd like to see and changing our descriptions if we want to, and ensuring that staff are doing what their job duties say they should be doing. The company will, at this point, is working on the wage analysis part and will continue to do that as well. The job description part, we're going to circle back with them next week and show them what we put together. So, that's kind of where we're at with that. The Heritage Estates Water Tower has a cell tower on the top of it and we've been working with a consultant who's helping us work with AT&amp;T on updating the lease to the Fifth Amendment. We get about five thousand a month for rent fees and it will go up to like seven thousand five hundred-ish if we approve that. So, I'm just in the stage of reviewing that and then I'll get with supervisor or trustee Corn, who's very knowledgeable about that, just to make sure we're good to go. So, I'll be getting with you on that shortly. And then my plan would be to bring that back to the board for final approval. The private fire hydrant ordinance that we talked about recently, we, you wanted me to schedule it for the hearing today, to rescind that due to the fifteen-day requirement for the public notice, we have to push it on to the twenty-fourth. So, that's been noticed and the way we chose to handle that is to only prohibit future private hydrants with a plan to consult with the fire department, our engineer and the DPW on what the language should look like for the next amendment, because we have a bunch of them that are out there, I think like eighty-nine of them. So, the current ordinance talks about maintaining them, fees, all these things, so if you were just to get rid of it, you know, who, you have nothing governing the maintenance of them. So, as long as we come up with language and how that is to work in the end, like do they turn them over to us for, for ownership? I don't know. So, that's a conversation we want to continue to have to make sure whatever that next amendment is, covers it, you know, to the best that I can.
Is it a zoning ordinance?
It is a police power ordinance.
Doesn't require fifteen days?
So, I, I brought that up at the last meeting, but we have found that we have done public hearings for police power ordinances and to remain consistent, we chose just to follow that route. That's why I did it.
Okay, I mean, again, it could be two weeks. It doesn't have to be fourteen, fifteen days.
Police power.
Yeah, we, we just found in the past where we'd done that, so we're like, you know, with the conversation we hit at the board, it sounded like the board would really want that done, so we just chose just to do it, so.
Sounds inefficient, but you can do that.
Yeah. I probably should have just made a decision and just went with, out doing the hearing, but, you know, it was, it was a few weeks, so.
Yeah, you have to have a hearing, but you don't have to have fifteen days.
Fifteen days, Dallas.
Molly, do you have a question for Chris?
Yeah, just a question on the wage study. When you're, when this company does the wage study, do they have a difference in looking at townships that are open four days a work, a week versus five days a week, or do they figure that they're all full-time?
I think the assumption would be that they're all full-time. I don't think they're going to get that detailed in the questioning, so I think it's just going to be in a full-time position is what they're going to check into.
You might ask that question, there is a benefit to being four-day work week versus a five-day work week. I don't know if it's weighted or...
There's a value.
There's a value to having that.
Right, for sure.
We also have really long days. Ten-hour days.
Yeah, we sort of forty hours.
Yeah.
I, I'd be careful of limiting that because then you're just limiting your data comparison pool, right? So, I don't know, is it really common for townships to only be open four days?
Yeah.
Okay, well, then maybe wouldn't limit it that much, but...
Yeah, that's a question for the people that are doing it, is there a weighted something in there?
Okay, all right, I'll ask that question. That's all I have, any other questions?
So, on the, if I understand it correctly, so on the fire hydrants, we're going, what we're going to propose is change the ordinance that they're not allowed in going forward.
On, on the twenty-fourth, you, that's the order?
Yeah, so, we won't have any more of them. We got the eighty-nine, we're going to stop more, new ones and then at some point go double back and try to figure out how to handle the eighty-nine that are there, so.
That haven't been inspected.
Yeah, well, actually, some have only because BPW's inspecting them, but they're only charging twenty-five bucks a year to inspect.
During, during the construction period, they weren't necessarily inspected.
Yeah, so, it's something we definitely, we've talked about this at Metro Fire too, that, you know, we want to know where they're at, we want to make sure they work. And that's, if, if they, we don't know where they're at and we don't know they work, they aren't much good for fighting fires, so, it's all for our benefit, so. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
All right, supervisor report, not a whole lot tonight. We did have an MTA meeting out at Green Lake last week, hosted by Marv, and he spoke at that. Good, good meeting, not a lot covered because we just had the one at Long Lake recently, so there was just a few things talked about there. We had, we continue to move forward with the Commons Water. We're in good shape, we've got our permits, our easements and leases pretty well worked out, we have one more meeting with our attorney tomorrow, we're hoping to have all those finalized so we can probably bring them back to this board in a couple of weeks or very soon to get them finalized, they're ready to move forward with that construction and get that water connection made and get that done by the end of the year, so, good news is we're ahead of the city, we're, you know, we got kudos on our call today that we're, you know, Chris had been working diligently to get these done and we're looking good, the city's got to double back and get a couple of things done that they're missing. And again, hope to have that done by October. Metro Fire, we're going to start budget talks this week, so we'll be, as we, as Chief mentioned, we're going to start those discussions, kind of like the township's going to start pretty quick, it's already, you know, it's May, it must start to be time to talk about budgets for next year, so, it seems early, but it's, it's not. And then, we, it should be an interesting BPW meeting this week, we are hoping to resolve the kind of limbo thing we have right now with, we have a, you know, a finance committee that can't function because we have too many people on it and it's pretty, pretty messed up right now, so we're hoping to get that clarified and not sure if the, if the county has or is getting ready to act on their decision whether they're going to make us a nine-member board or if not, then give us a two back, they haven't approved, so we can get back functioning, because right now, we can't, it's really difficult to get a quorum, we're technically an eleven-member board with nine active members and, and so it's pretty hard to get with any kind of controversial issue to get a quorum, so, kind of still messed up with that, but hopefully we'll get some of that resolved Thursday morning. Thursday morning, nine o'clock, if you want to show up and watch, should be fun. And that's pretty much all I had, so. Yes?
Okay, Mr. Ferenc Spence, you just have a quick report?
Okay. Any questions for me before I, all right, thanks. Ferenc, we didn't have you earlier, would you like to make your report?
Yeah. Chris, I sent you an email. Did you get my email that I was, I had to go to Blair first? Sorry, maybe I've got the wrong, okay.
I don't think so.
I didn't look at the address that I sent it to, so maybe it's an old one, but at any rate, thank you and sorry that my email didn't get to the right people. In the future, should I send an email to Chris if I'm going to be somewhere else or would you like to get that email?
Chris would be the best one to send it to.
Okay, got it. So, June fourth, we had our last Board of Commissioners meeting and we are looking to expand our county operations building possibly up on the top of Lefraine Road, so I, we were hoping to approve this county facilities management building that'll go next to the nine-one-one dispatch building so that the building costs can be better managed, building both buildings at the same time. But because we may be moving more county operations to the top of Lefraine Road, we are considering if we need to expand that building to make it larger. So, we've been working with Cunningham Limp on that, determining the twelve different departments or so that are under the county's umbrella, if they need more storage space. And I think that's appropriate to bring up to you because it's in Garfield Township. You know, there's MSU Extension, Community Non-Aging, Animal Control, Parks and Rec, Department of Public Works and Environmental Health and others. This doesn't really apply to Garfield Township, but Civic Center irrigation system's going to be replaced, but we did, it did come to mind what's been going on with Garfield Township and the city, and with that in mind, it would be nice to have their irrigation system be as moderate in the amount of water that is used. I, I think it's good to think about how our water comes out of East Bay, gets sucked up through a big straw, gets treated with chemicals and then we irrigate lines with it. So, it was asked by several commissioners to maybe look at how we're irrigating large parcels like the Civic Center and try to be as moderate as possible with water usage. American Rescue Plan Act, we are going to look at anyone who has remaining balance. I don't think Garfield Township has any remaining balance, but if you do, we are going to have everybody report in August as to what, where they are and if they're going to be spending their money soon and what the plan is. Which brings me to our Mental Health Crisis Center, we're going to ask them to report to our board in August to reassure that they're sustainable and that they are, they have continuity to address and be able to address their ARPA balance which they have, and we just want to make sure they're sustainable because as you read in the Record Eagle or the Checker, we're having some issues with community mental health and money. And then finally, the municipal separate stormwater system, also known as MS4 program, our county is part of that, as you know, and we are going to nest with the city of Traverse City so that the regulations that are required and mandated by Eagle are better streamlined and more manageable, and I think that's a good thing. Any questions or comments?
Has the county taken up the conversation about BPW board at all in the last couple meetings that you're now?
You know what, we haven't. We got the letter from the attorney and it has not been discussed, but I, I took a note while you were discussing that because I'd like to take that back to our VOC and make sure that we have done everything that we need to do on our end at this point.
Okay, yeah, I mean, from, you know, I can't speak for the entire BPW, but we, you know, they, you know the story, we have two members that their terms expired, the recommendation of the county was to go to nine members verbally, so they haven't renewed those. As a finance committee, we recommended which two members to remove and the finance committee voted unanimously to do that, but the, of the seven members that voted that day, four voted for and four were against. Of course, the people that are getting removed are going to vote against and so that was kind of where that came from and so we didn't have a quorum, but we were told the county was going to act with or without a recommendation from the BPW, they were still going to act, so, me personally, just me asking, I'd like them either act, either make us a nine-person board and make the decision or give us back the two members that expired, because it really makes us unable to function right now.
Right, yeah, and thanks, I'm glad I was here to hear you express that because I did make a note of that and I believe, if I understand correctly, it needs to be added to the agenda when they have the agenda setting meeting, or I can bring it up tomorrow at our study session and, and ask that we, that we manage this and figure out what is best to do from our end.
Right, okay, appreciate it.
That attorney letter, I almost feel like they put it back into the Department of Public Works course, or Works on Court, if I remember correctly.
In a sense they did, but for a recommendation, but it's still ultimately the county's decision. So, the county asked us for a recommendation, we gave it, but because we didn't have a quorum, they wouldn't, they wouldn't submit it as a resolution because we didn't have a quorum. We needed six votes, we would have needed six out of seven votes to the people that were present that day voting, because they're still considering us an eleven-member board and so six is a quorum. Well, there's only seven people voting that day because two were never reappointed, so it's, by having a nine active members, one or two people missing or unable to vote, makes it almost impossible to get a quorum right now, so.
Okay.
So, the resolution wasn't sent to the county board because it didn't have a quorum of the entire board, so.
Okay, well, we'll either help you figure it out or we'll figure it out, whatever.
It's going to be a hot topic on, on Thursday, I'm sure, because we had, had to cancel finance committee meetings because of an issue, because we have a different issue, but similar, so, you know, we, we've got to get back into doing business.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah, so. All right, thanks, Ferenc. Unfinished business, item seven A, consideration of resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen dash T and schedule a public hearing for ordering preparation of Ridgeview Court resurfacing special assessment role.
So, starting back in twenty-three, the residents there at Ridgeview Court approached us about repaving the road, we went through the whole process of public hearings, the board approved the district and the assessment role last year in the fall, and the original proposed estimate from the road commission came in significantly cheaper than, or less than what the actual cost was to repave it, nearly fifty thousand dollars. So, I had a, a meeting with the residents, I think it was in April, everybody was noticed that we'd have it here at the township, roughly five residents showed up and we talked about, you know, the cost increase and if they wanted to proceed and the individuals who were there wanted to continue, including the one who spearheaded the effort originally. So, I've been working with the road commission, our engineer, determining what the increased cost would be because it's went up again. Good, the good thing is only about four thousand dollars from last fall and the, the low bidder was Elmer's. So, at this point, due to the fact that it is over ten percent higher than the original approval of the special assessment role, we have to have a public hearing again and get input from the residents. So, what this resolution does is it schedules a, a public hearing to talk about the special assessment role and what costs would be assessed to each resident. It originally was about five thousand dollars when it all started, now it's going to be roughly eight thousand dollars per resident. So, that's, that's what this does and it, and it sounds like according to Elmer's that it's, it's going to be done this year. So, that was verbally, nothing written, which is good because the residents, you know, would like to see this project completed and move on.
I would like to make a motion to approve of resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen dash T as presented.
Support.
Motion main supported to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash fourteen dash T, which schedules a public hearing for the special assessment district on Ridgeview Court, and that public hearing will be on June twenty-fourth at our regular scheduled meeting.
A question. Isn't there water with that too?
Yes.
So, that's all of... So, that's all of it together?
So, the water is going to be paid for by us and reimbursed when they do the connections in the future. So, the, the residents will only be responsible for the road part.
They're gonna be done simultaneously.
Yeah, Elmer's is doing all of it together.
Yeah, they're gonna do, that's why it's kind of been, it's trying to get the two projects synced.
Yeah.
So, the water line will be put in, and the road, new road all at the same time.
Good.
Any further discussion on that motion? All right, Anne, can we have a roll call on that?
Corn.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
L. McManus.
Yes.
Jay McManus.
Yes.
And it's noted that Schmuckel abstained.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business. Consideration of changing the name of Pearl Rose Lane to Burmley Hills Road.
So, this was kind of a hot topic, as you can remember, and really what it took is reviewing our ordinance, the county ordinance, our ordinance, meeting with the 911 director and the equalization director, and saying, okay, what will work? And, and the, you know, the residents I met with them out at their, at the property, and basically told them, it can't remain the same. You have to figure out something different. So, figure out something that is meaningful and works for you. And Burmley Hills Road was that road. The equalization department is actually, because of the way their north-south road at his falls, they're allowed to keep two numbers of their existing address, so they're, they're able to maintain the historical significance of their address, but yet it's slightly changed. So, what I'm requesting is that you consider approving the road name change. If you do, I end up sending the minutes to the equalization, and they make the changes. And then that whole situation is behind everybody. And, and everybody out there is happy, everybody's content.
Sort of simple motion?
Simple motion.
If you remember, this is early in the year, the part of the Lowndes family came in, they, there's a spur road off Burmley. They still use Burmley addresses, but it's not legal, and it's really difficult. For emergency services like Metro, they want a different address name, so this kind of keeps everybody happy. Everybody seems happy with the compromise.
I would make a motion to approve the name change as presented.
Support.
Motion made, supported to approve and recommend approval of the change in name to Pearl, from Pearl Rose Lane to Burmley Hills Road. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Thanks, Chris. All right, consideration of agreement with the Grand Traverse County Road Commission to contribute $161,667 for repairs to Barney Road. You want this one, or you want me to do it? Go ahead.
Okay.
We were both there at the meeting, but you go ahead.
If I forget something. So, Manager Watkins was here in our last meeting, and he talked about this project, so you're, you should be familiar with it. The proposed cost share amount for Garfield that they're requesting is $161,667, and it's proposed. Now, they obviously have to go out for bids, and if their number changes, I've been told that this number will not change for us. It will not go up by any amount.
Will it go down?
What if it's cheaper?
I, I guess, I don't expect it to go down, based on other variables that, yeah, I don't expect it to go down.
What's the total cost?
They still have to determine that through the bid.
So, had they come up with a very specific number of $161,667?
Roughly a percentage, a percentage.
I don't feel comfortable.
What is that percentage?
Yeah, exactly. I don't feel comfortable with that.
It's roughly a quarter.
Well, we don't know what the bid is, so how can that even be that? I don't, I don't agree with that, I'm sorry. I, I can't agree to paying $161,000 of a bid that we don't have.
They have, they have, it's a little more complicated than that, I think, but it's, it's, there are, there are good estimates on what it's gonna cost, and they're, they're getting creative in their funding, and, and this contribution for us is probably lower than it would normally be in a, in a normal, in a normal bid, a normal agreement to copay, so it's.
Then you don't have proof of that. You have no proof of that, right?
Not on me.
I mean, they don't have any proof of that, that.
Well, comparatively speaking, though, because there's another road that we're looking at right now that we know the total cost of, correct?
Well, the, the Potter Road, if that's the one you're referring to, they've, they've come up with the funding to completely pay for Potter Road. So, we're not, and we're not gonna cost share on Potter Road at all. That's getting fixed, and we're not on the hook for any of that. They've come back and said Barney Road, they met with us and Long Lake, showed the whole project, what their estimates were, and, and have said, hey, look, we know that, you know, a full cost share might be, this is probably low, this is a number that's lower than a normal cost share, based on the estimates. So, they're saying, we, we can, we can get the project done with this amount of money, and, and based on our estimates, and they will guarantee if it goes up, they'll cover the overages.
Normally, you pay 50%, but this is a quarter of a estimate.
About 25% of the project instead of a 50% cost share.
And.
If that makes sense.
And our friends in Long Lake will cover about a quarter.
Theirs is gonna be much more than ours, we've been told.
Okay. Theirs is a lot higher.
Why is that?
There's a lot more repair leased on Long Lake. It's a longer stretch road, their, theirs was a lot higher overall cost. I'm not sure, I don't have the number of it from me.
It was, yep, and then ours is to do from Gray Road to Barney, and if you travel that road, it's really bad once you, you know, what, head into town from Harris Road and start, or, yeah, Harris Road, yeah.
It's bouncy.
Yeah. It's a well-protected area of the road, too, and I don't know how it got so bad.
Time.
Yeah.
It's a drainage piece right there, because it's not a curve, I think.
It, you know, it's probably a little bit, uh, non-typical way to, to look at it. They just put the whole package there, just look, we, we wanna get this done, so we'll get some, looking at alternate sources for funding, too, so.
Where's this money coming from?
So, our road fund has about $175,000 in it, and that's usually used for special assessments. The Ridgeview special assessment will be roughly $45,000 our cost. There is the Logan's Landing, which will probably happen next year, and then there's another neighborhood who is inquiring. So, those special assessments could take up all those funds.
Okay, we pay all of Ridgeview Court their share and our share out of that, so that has come up front, and they reimburse us, so.
That's right.
So, no.
No.
You would have to transfer money from our general fund into the road fund.
You asking where the money would come from out of our budget?
Yeah.
Or just where?
Out of our budget, yeah.
I, I think the only source would be general fund. It'll be a general fund.
We can, we can do a transfer to the roads.
Yeah, we transfer, general fund, we would take it out of the general fund.
Okay. I'm all right with that.
Would it?
It's a, it's a, it's a difficult road, because it's a, it's a transit road, there's not a lot of residents, it's a, it's a through road, so it's a, it's a difficult one to do a special assessment, and it's just ground, because there's not a lot of residents there, so.
Would it reprioritize any other roads? And the one road I think about is Frankie Road, but, so, yeah.
That is scheduled to be repaired next year.
Okay.
Road commission budget to do that. That's what I've been told.
Okay.
So, that's one that's been reclassified and qualifies for federal funds.
Got it.
And part of that's in the city as well, right? Any of Frankie?
One side of it.
One side of it, yeah, one side of it is.
And the car wash is.
One side of it up to the car wash.
That would, won't be one that'll come back to us for funding.
Okay.
There was three roads identified as really needing repair, was Potter, Barney, and Rouge was the third one. I haven't heard anything about Rouge lately, but Potter, they've come up, after they came and asked for cost share, Blair was struggling to come up with money, they funded, found funding to complete Potter on their own. And, but then, so they moved on to Barney, and so we'd like some, some cost share on Barney.
So, you're, in your opinion, this $161,000 is actually less than you think that we should've had to pay?
Absolutely. We, we, yeah, we've, we've sat down with them, they showed us the, the numbers, and this is a, if we're gonna cost share on a road, this is a pretty good deal.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I feel confident in that.
I would make a motion to approve that.
I support that.
Motion made, supported to approve co-funding the repairs on Barney Road at a cost of $161,667. It'd be taken out of our general fund and transferred to the road fund. Any further discussions on that? Anne, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Corn.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Leanie McManus.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
Agustinelli.
Yes.
Schmuckel, did I say?
Yeah, I seconded.
Okay, you're seconding, and Joe McManus.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, item C, consideration of software and services for BSNA cloud upgrade. Who's handling this one?
Chloe, are you handling this, or am I handling this?
So, this is something that's, I guess I can start.
You start, walk up, and then Chris can jump in on that.
This is something that's been coming for a while. BSNA is gonna end.net, and they're gonna announce the end to it soon. So, we were told that if we were proactive and got on the schedule, we could pick a time that worked best for us, because when they announce it, they're assuming everybody's gonna get on the schedule, so. We would like to start April of 2026, because that works best for assessing me and tax, and then.
Before the election.
Leanie, before the elections. But basically, there's a lot of pros to it, mainly being security, it's cloud-based. When the county had their data breach, BSNA was one of the last things they got back, because it was on their server, and it wasn't in the cloud. So, we use BSNA for every department, it's our main software. So, the increased security is huge. It's supposed to have other integrations and updated look and all that. But I would say the security is probably the biggest upgrade, so it's all in the cloud, it's not on the server, and they, they just have two different cloud servers, so it's supposed to be unbreachable, or so they say, but it's a lot more expensive, as you'll see here, and maybe Leanie could talk about the increase in cost. But basically, the cost increase, the rep told us, is due to the servers that they have to maintain.
They maintain, right now, we maintain the servers. It's all, it's on our servers, we maintain it. But because it's in the cloud, they're going to maintain it, they're going to, to be responsible for the security of it. Either way, either we do it in '26, or we do it when they go out, and we may be, because they won't be supporting.net anymore. We're gonna have to do it, one way or the other, and I don't know, I don't know how much, we don't have the ARPA funds left, do we, to do the, no. This is just going to be on us to do the upgrade, and then it's about, it's more than double per, per year to maintain it, but that's because of them maintaining the, the cloud for us.
I have a question on that. I know it said that the total proposal was $110,935, but in the fine print, the estimate travel expenses are not outlined, so that's gonna be above and beyond.
Yeah, they, they said they could, the travel expenses is for them to come up here and train us. They don't, we don't have to use the travel expenses. We can be trained online, or they recommend one or two days, come up, show us how to use that, be here. Once we go on to it, they give us a phone number, we have a direct access to them at all times. But they do recommend one day of coming up and just being here on site while we work with it. That's the travel expenses. They're not, they're not expecting a lot of travel expenses.
Because I'm looking at this for one day for one person is about $1,500. I mean, breaking it down, I mean, that's the cheapest hotel rate, but that's $730 per trip, airfare-related expenses.
Well, there's not gonna be the airfare. They're gonna drive up, because they're down by Lansing.
Okay.
There will be no airfare. There, there, this is software for all over the country, so they'll be driving up.
So, they pay 70%, 70 cents a mile for them to come up, and $70 per day for meals.
Okay, they're gonna come up for one or two days. It would be worth it if we need it. If we don't need it, we're just going to do it through the phone.
What, what I was thinking about, if it made into a motion, we shouldn't just put the only the $110,935 plus expenses.
Okay, sounds good.
That's what I'm, that's, because this is above and beyond, because then if we do this 110, then all of a sudden it's an extra $2,000 for them to train, then it's like, wait a minute, we didn't authorize that, so. That's why I was saying, if I do, if we did a motion, to add that on to that.
Just say plus expenses if needed.
If needed, right.
Paul.
Would there be an added expense, and is there a reason to not have trustees be able to access BSNA? Just so we can stay up with what the property values are, and what's selling, and those kinds of things?
There is an expense per, per user.
Per person.
Is, what is it, Chloe? Is it per department? We have to check on it. I can't, I can't give you access, there's some other read-only that I would be allowed, but you can't get into all of my programs. Not everybody can get into the programs.
But the, the thing I would be interested in is, is property transfers, and how many commercial pieces are moving, and, you know, residential, how they're moving.
A read-only program?
Hmm?
A read-only.
A read-only.
Yeah, they can't, they can't access, they wouldn't be able to access it. They wouldn't be able, but a read-only, I don't know. What do they have at the county where they're able to access?
You can do it, but they charge you per parcel.
Oh, I see.
To look at it. So, that's not, I mean, I can do it through the real estate community has its own, but.
I could check into it.
People might wanna, yeah.
I would have no answer to that.
So, I have one question on here. It looks like your annual fee is about $51,000, but then you have an implementation fee of $54,000. Is that a one-time fee?
It's the one-time fee, yeah.
I would highly recommend you negotiate that implementation fee, because my guess is, is they've got some wiggle room in there. Just my salesperson background. I would try to negotiate that implementation fee a little bit.
Okay, I'll talk to him about it. I have no problem. I, ask Joe, I have no problem asking for a good deal.
So, we're not gonna do anything on this tonight, then, if you're gonna?
Well, I think we do have to.
I could still, we, okay.
Not to exceed, we could do a not to exceed.
We still need to, if you guys would like to.
Because we want to do it in April. They have one spot open in April, because that's the date, that's the sweet spot for all townships, where the assessing is done, the taxes are done, it's before an election, so that spring, April, May, you're pushing elections. So, April is the sweet spot, and they've got one slot open, so if we approve it tonight, we're gonna tell them we approve it, we're gonna be moved into that slot.
But we could do a not to exceed.
Yeah, we could do a not to exceed, and you still ask them to negotiate.
Still got a bargain, if you've got.
If they're discussing, sure.
I would like to make a motion that we do the software and service for BSNA cloud upgrades of $110,935 plus expenses, but not to exceed that.
Support.
Motion made and supported to approve the BSNA proposal, not to exceed $110,935 plus expenses if needed for training. Any further discussion on that motion? Anne, can we have a roll on that?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Who seconded? Agustinelli.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
L. McManus.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes. All I can say is the clerk's office is expensive tonight. They're talking about all this. It's gonna get worse.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Software and voting machines and all this kind of stuff.
Ooh, it's in software.
All right. Discussion on River East Recreation Area Infrastructure. I believe, Jennifer, are you gonna talk through that? It's a tough crowd tonight, Jennifer.
They asked for more money.
Oh, well, this was just thrown upon us. Right, Jennifer?
I know. Well, good evening, everyone. Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. Our elusive River East continues to keep evolving, potentially. So, yes, to trustee Denise's point, I was at Park and Rock, was it last week? I don't even know what week it is.
Last Monday.
Yeah. We, there was discussion on River East itself, and I may say the playground equipment is amazing. I, I still, it even, mind-boggling, I drive by, and all of a sudden, there's just a super colorful tower, so of course, you know, being the kid that I am, I have to pull in there, and I know, it's very exciting, and then I take my 16-year-old there, I'm like, come on, Noel, we're gonna. I'm like, come on, Noel, we're gonna go. He looks at me like, okay, Mom. But I mean, this is very cool. It was much more monstrous in size, I guess, than I envisioned, when, you know, Derek's like, oh, we got playground equipment in, and it's getting installed, and then, I mean, and it's huge, and it's amazing, and it's, but yet, at the same token, I mean, now, it necessitates and kind of is changing some of the timelines for things, for, you know, the bathroom, and then we're reevaluating potentially, maybe there's a better location for the bathroom. And, you know, parking, because now there's so much more interest. And so, you can see where this is going, and we had quite a discussion at Park and Rec, and I truly appreciated all the feedback. And same thing with Derek and Sean and their input. And then, just from a staff perspective, Denise attended, we had a Park and Rec staff meeting, just to kind of talk about some of these parameters. So, in your packet, ultimately, the suggestion, and I kind of just provided a quick summary, but it was a request on behalf of staff from our meeting, and then from the Park and Rec, to present to this board consideration to make some modifications. As you guys may recall, I don't know, about six weeks ago or so, you know, it was discussed, and you could definitely tell, just through the tone of my voice, the frustrations we had of, you know, we had a prefab bathroom, we'd put down payment, we worked with that manufacturer for well over a year, just continually being provided hopes, and, you know, never, ever a full commitment, even probably if I were to call them today, there probably would never be, you know, any type of commitment that they could really nail down, despite us putting 10% payment, or the township payment, as far as when we were gonna see a deliverable. So, ultimately, it was agreed upon by this board for us to move ahead with doing an onsite build for bathrooms. So, that's what I've been working on, and I'm actually getting that wrapped up, as far as that bathroom. And, you know, and it's gonna be a night, it's gonna be a great bathroom. It's gonna be, you know, a little bit more cost, as you guys had seen last time with the estimates, but definitely gonna be consistent with the theme and style that we want, and providing some more abilities for features and amenities, and the longevity that we're hoping for, for a year-round bathroom. But with that, like I said, with the playground now actually physically available and being utilized, there was then discussion, okay, let's look at the parking spaces, and there was interest to increase the amount of parking spaces, which you will now see that we've, I've got shown, basically, I'm just referring to this park concept drawing that has evolved, dated June 4th, that now shows additional parking space area of about 110 feet by 140 feet, which translates to about 60 more parking spaces. Speaking from, with staff particularly, I mean, people are just kind of parking wherever. They're parking in staging areas in front of the pole barn. And so, we want to kind of continue to encourage, you know, safe parking, safe mobility and access, because kids are gonna be running back and forth. And with that, you know, if people are taking their dogs, and then the kids are in the playground, we're now looking, you know, we've got that pavilion on the north end, and the bathroom with that was slated to be near that pavilion. Well, with the focus of the playground equipment and parking spaces, there was concern about safety and kids running across parking lots. So, now you'll see on this concept drawing that is next to that parking lot expansion, is in that same color scheme, but hatched, a potential alternate location for a bathroom. And again, please keep in mind, this is all conceptual. So, once, if this were to get approved, we would, I would work with staff on, you know, with the grading and final design to ensure that the connectivities, everything functions, and is providing that safe passage to the parking spaces and whatnot. So, I just want to offer that. But, so this drawing was updated to, one, I guess first and foremost, to reflect the phases and fully encompass the project's scope and intent of what's gonna happen. So, now we're down to four phases. And then also, show the expanded parking lot that's being potentially proposed tonight, the alternate bathroom that's being proposed. And then also, reflected in the cost estimate, through discussions with staff, is basically our, our full, at this moment, according to Derek and Sean, comprehensive wish list of items that are included in Phase Four, which is a future phase, but then also in Phase Three, which we've talked about related. And those in yellow are ones that township staff are either working on or have already completed, which includes like the bathroom, the hands-free drinking fountain benches, there's pole barn updates, which we've kind of started nailing that down, as far as what we're looking at to do re-steal exterior, but also provide insulation inside, liner steel, heating, and make that more of a functional, usable sealed pole barn, so that we can store things, and they can actually work in there. And also, a future non-potable well for future irrigation, when we ultimately into Phase Four do landscaping. And so, with the well and the pole barn, that's an item that staff's gonna take on. I had shared a couple example, example RFPs with your township manager, for him to critique and solicit for bids, because, and I'm happy to help, but it's by no means anything that requires any type of engineered plans. So, it's just really, just me providing some guidance and resources, but that's something that you guys can solicit through an RFP process yourself. But tonight, just wanted to discuss all this stuff, present it all, get your thoughts and feedback. And then, along with that, if you guys do decide, I kind of broke it up à la carte, to just discuss the pros and cons, and cost impacts, timeline impacts, if you guys did want to proceed with the parking lot expansion and the alternate bathroom location. With that, the parking lot, Phase Three, we do have a contractor, if you guys recall, that's still lined up and just kind of waiting. And when we had put this out for bid earlier, and their prices are still valid and current, and I have made them aware. So, if we were to do the parking lot expansion, that is very consistent with their current scope, because they were already going to do paving operations for that entire loop. So, that would just have to be worked with them after we did a design. But it would require me to do another set of plans, take a look at the topo, making sure we have ADA compliance, parking lot, striping, illustrating that. And then, the same thing for the bathroom. The biggest challenge we have with the bathroom, and part of the reason, I guess, the original bathroom as proposed was twofold. One was because it was by a pavilion, the existing pavilion that's there, and for rental space in the dog park, that predated the playground equipment. And secondly, we were reutilizing an existing drain field location from the original farmhouse. So, we were trying to be very fiscally responsible with that location, and it also made sense at that time. But as we're seeing, everything changes. And so, if we were to do an alternate bathroom location, I think the biggest timetable challenge would be that, because we would have to work with the Health Department, because it would be my recommendation that we would work with them, soil test, and do a new drain field next to that new bathroom, rather than holding to that existing drain field location. Because, just because of the flatness of the site, we would have to pump it over there, and that just doesn't make sense to me. When you look at the grand scheme of things and cost, ultimately, you know, the drain field that's there has some useful life, but not forever. So, rather than spending the effort, maintenance and costs, to have a pumping infrastructure, if we're gonna move the bathroom, I'd recommend to you guys to continue to keep it gravity for maintenance, and we would just work with the Health Department to construct a new drain field and septic tanks. So, those costs are related to that, too. So, but that does take time, working with the Health Department. And I do know with the septic ordinance that they have in place right now, they've got quite a backlog. So, those, yeah, so I'm probably kind of rambling. I'll let you guys ask questions. But I did, on the last page of the cost estimate, just for your purposes, if I were you, so what you're seeing is Phase Three, the two cost comparisons of what it would look like. If we were to move the bathroom, you know, what that extra cost would translate into. So, there is some extra cost, but there's also just a timetable factor into that. I mean, ultimately, it's my, our goal to be motivated and want to still have this all complete this year to the best of our abilities. But the biggest driver's gonna just be with Health Department. And I know currently with me and current experience, they're usually about a month out just to even get them scheduled to do a soils investigation with us, which the current bathroom, as was bid, that's already permitted. And it's just a matter of us working with the contractor.
All right, who wants to start?
I know, probably a lot of questions.
So, just coming from the perspective of a mom who has kids, I think it's, the alternate bathroom location is gonna be much safer and much easier for the playground, and it's more centralized. So, personally, I feel like if we're gonna do this park, we should do it right. And this is gonna be a long-term park that's gonna be used for several years. So, I, I do like the personal bath, or the, sorry, the alternative bathroom location. I think just for safety reasons, but also, I think it makes more sense. So, I think it's worth the money to relocate the bathroom, the time is kind of unfortunate. But do you know about how much longer, we wouldn't be able to do it this year if we did the alternate location, is that...
My hope is still to try to, because my, the bathroom design I have is probably, I'm probably about a week from being done. But really, the challenge, and I had probably spoke to this in too much length, that Park and Rec was just the drain field, and working with the Health Department and that permitting process. Because we're subject to, with any of you on drain fields, I mean, you have to find suitable soil. And not that I doubt that that's not probably there, is the case with the sand conditions. But, you know, we are in northern Michigan, and we can hit certain clay lenses that, you know, may have a factor. But it's really just, they have to physically be out there. We have staff that work with them, but it requires them to be out there with our staff, and to do those perk tests, and to get the soil samples. And it's just with how backed up they are right now, I'm finding it to be about, that puts us about a month, at least a month further out, to get their approval before moving ahead. Because I would hate to, I would not want to recommend to you guys, yeah, let's do the bathroom, this is what we're gonna do, without having the Health Department's approval first. Not necessarily, I mean, you have to have the permit in hand, but at least approval of the soil conditions, and that's a viable location for the drain field. So, that would be step number one, that if you guys were to approve that tonight, that's the first thing I'm gonna do, is coordinate with them. And, you know, hope that they can, you know, accelerate their schedule. But of course, they have other priorities, too.
Okay.
So, I'd love to say this year, but I can't say.
I think it's worth waiting another month, I mean, we've waited long enough.
But I, right, and that was...
I don't know what the other board members think.
But that was part of the discussion we had, is, is, you know, if we're gonna open this can of worms and do the parking lot expansion, you know, let's, and we're gonna change other things, let's, you know, make this how we want it to be.
Right.
Because, and I can, I work for you guys, so I can do whatever you want.
Did I also hear you say somewhere in there, that by the topography of the land, that the new bathroom site would make more sense than the current bathroom?
No, both sites are fine. No, I was talking about, so with, if we were to keep the existing drain field and move the bathroom, we're so far away, and the site's so flat, we wouldn't have a lot of slope. We'd have to pump it.
I see what you're saying, okay.
And I, I don't recommend doing that, if you don't have to, at all.
Denise?
Just so you're aware, at the commission meeting, that Jennifer and I, this was the first time we had heard about moving the bathroom. That was the very first time. But as we talked about it, the playground wasn't supposed to be done this soon, right? We got the ARPA funds, we did it. We're thankful that it did. Because if those kids had to cross that parking lot to go to the bathroom, there's a liability there waiting to happen. So, that's why it was gonna be brought up tonight, to see if we could go ahead with the Health Department and move it. It may cost us a little bit more money, but I think it's gonna be the best bet, because of the kids and running to the bathroom and things like that. The people at the dog park, they're more adults, they can, you know, on their way. But having the bathroom closer to the playground, we thought was much more feasible.
Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, if you move the bathroom, really now, the only way, the only use that becomes out of the way is the existing pavilion.
Right.
It's gonna be the, those people are gonna have to cross over, but...
Right.
With the playground, and with the, not only the parking lot, but really, you're crossing the main driveway in as well. So, I get it, I can see the need to move it.
But you've got a proposed pavilion in here as well.
We do, yeah.
Is that also in this cost?
It's in Phase Four.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And probably, I see that one probably being one of the busier ones, as opposed to the other existing one, yeah.
Molly, hand her hand up first, though.
Yeah, so, just a question, I'm agreeing with both of you ladies here. But on this park, it seems like it's kind of dragging along some. I know it's the bathrooms and other things. What would the cost to us be to just do it? Do Phase Four, do, I mean, we've already paid for some of this that's in here. If I'm looking at that right, is it a $2,777,466 as a total? But some of it we've paid for, what's, what's left?
So, well, Phase Three and Phase Four are what's left.
Okay, and so what's the cost on that?
Um, 1.9 roughly, so the majority of it, yeah.
Phase Two's 800, and Phase Three, or Phase Four is 1.6, 1.7. Phase Four is really where the big money's at.
It's the trail, yeah.
The trail, if we go with all the trails and bridges and, and that type of thing.
And, and that trail as depicted, and that, and again, that's subject to you guys. The trail as depicted, the, the loop around is all paved, and then the outer ones, like to the river, those are all afton stone. So, the paved part, so much like Silver Lake, it, you know, that's what is intended to be mirrored around, is, you know, where you've got that big paved loop all around the entire park.
So, we could finish Phase Three?
That is the goal, yes.
This time? And it's an 800,000 plus minus?
Yes, yep. And the items in yellow are those depicted that would be performed either by staff or solicited through a proposal phase by township staff.
Laney.
What is the timeline on getting the, the parking places, the parking lot done? Trail to the, what is the timeline, if we approve this, on getting the parking lot and the trail to the playground, ADA trail done? What is that?
How quickly, in other words? How quickly could that be done?
Yes.
Well, so that depends on your decision tonight. If you guys decide to keep it as is without doing the parking lot expansion, that, I can work with the contractor now. If you guys decide you want to do the parking lot expansion, I probably need about 30 days to get that set of plans wrapped up, work with them on a change order, because I have to do grading and have a detail, and integrate it with the existing plan set. So, it'd be about a month later for them, yeah.
How long to get the ADA compliant trail to the new playground?
That would be, well, that's to the playground?
That needs to be done.
Right, that's all, that's, that's what I'm getting at. That depends on the decision tonight, yeah. Because you can see there's that connector from the parking lot. Now, if we don't do the expansion, that trail connector's a lot longer. But it, yeah, it's really gonna depend on the decision of this board tonight, and how much you guys want to do for parking, separate from the, you're saying separate from the bathroom, correct?
Yes, I know the bathroom, we have to wait for the bathroom. I think the parking lot needs to get done with the trail to the, to the playground.
Right.
I would agree with that. Having visited it only once with Chris, that existing parking is not anywhere near adequate to handle what's gonna happen at that park. I, I would be really doing a disjustice to go with a little parking lot, go back here in six months, a year, put a big one in. So, I think it's the right decision to move with a bigger parking lot.
Yes, so that's, so Laney, that's all, in, in this additional service, I have it dated for completion of July 15th on my part, so then I'll work with the contractor for them to start mobilizing and doing the work. So, starting then. So, I would anticipate they'd probably start in August, and do that, is the intent.
Molly?
So, how much have we budgeted for in here, and how much would we need to pull out of general fund? Have we budgeted for any of this?
Laney, from a budget standpoint, Laney, where are we at on, how much is budgeted for this park for this year?
I don't remember.
You don't remember, okay.
So, we have 250 ARPA money going to the bathrooms. And I believe we budgeted, I want to say Phase, let me look at them. Phase, we did Phase Three for 2025.
You did. But this number is obviously inflated, because of the parking lot expansion and the additional connectors to the playground.
We would have to add more probably to it.
Yeah.
But I, I can't just, off the top of my head, I didn't look at the budget numbers.
So, the difference could come out of our general fund, then, correct?
Yes.
If this is part of it is already budgeted.
Right.
And the outcome's already budgeted. So, whatever above and beyond that could come out of our general fund.
Yes.
Yeah, or next year. I mean, I don't think this would all come out this year, right?
If she would have it done this year.
No, it would be done this year.
Phase Three to be done.
I, okay, it could be, yeah.
Well, then, yeah, we might have to move some money to our park fund.
How do we make that into a motion?
I don't know.
Yeah, because this cost estimate's evolved, just like the concept drawing, I know.
Try to make this into a motion?
Before we do that, I just had a couple of things. I, I'm looking down through, the only thing that could, that kind of throws by is the pole building. Yeah, I was all... only thing that kind of throws my eyes, the pole building, I was all about re, put a new skin on it, make it look good. We're turning it into a full-fledged heated building. Is that, is that needed? Does our, does our crew need that?
They do work out of there in the winter months and the cold weather months. They would appreciate that, actually.
All right, okay. I just, it was, and quite frankly, if you're going to put new skin, new roof, and insulated and heated, 100,000 is probably not a bad price.
No, I did not think so, yeah.
I just was surprised that, you know, I just wanted to make it look good, because it looks like a big 65-year-old tin can right now.
They did say something at that meeting, and Sean said that, too. Like, a lot of the stuff that they can get prepped for the springtime, they can do if it's heated, like, you know, doing some park benches or making tables or anything like that. They can do that all in the wintertime when they're not as busy, if it was heated.
Not against it, I just was surprised, you know, it was.
Well, that was, yeah. So when we had that meeting, for purposes, because, yeah, because I was kind of not shaming them, but I said, if I'm going to update this estimate in the drawing, what do you want? So when I present it to the board, it's, I don't, you know, because we don't want to keep changing this either. We want to have a clear path and vision that we're all behind. And so, and heating was one that was something that was discussed at the staff.
Quite frankly, the, you know, that 100,000 sitting here in River East, that's a cost that's not specifically for River East. They're going to be using that building to support the entire township, all the parks and trails and everything as well, so.
Yeah, if they're going to heat it, then, you know, I could potentially use it as a, as a polling place.
Yeah.
With a bathroom.
There you go. Right. So we're going to let Derek and Sean know that. Oh, yeah. Well, you'll have parking spaces, too.
Something like that. All right.
I don't know how to do this, but.
Yeah, are we looking, are we looking for a motion tonight to move forward with Phase Three?
With the moving of the bathrooms and expanding of the parking lot.
That would be my preference, so we could move forward and have a plan and just.
All right.
And then, and then my additional service, too, for, to give me authorization to move.
You're not getting paid, sorry.
I know.
Well, what I would suggest is maybe you make the motion and then that we increase, we, we move money from the general fund over and above what's budgeted to equal the 800,237. And that way, we cover what needs to be moved.
Okay. I will make a motion that we complete Phase Three on River East, which includes the moving of the bathroom and the expansion of the parking lot. Anything above and beyond that is budgeted in would become out of the general fund.
Support.
Okay. Motion made supported to move forward with the finalization of Phase Three, with all the additions and changes made tonight. In any, over, money over and above what's budgeted would be transferred out of general fund. Does that make sense? Any further discussion on that motion? All right. Ann, can we have a roll call on that, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Lap?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
And Joel McManus?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I forgot to put her across.
And no more changes, so I can get it done.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I've got it.
We have to make another motion about the change of cost for Jennifer.
For separate?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we have to approve Jennifer's proposal here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
For 16,500.
I would like to make a motion to approve Jennifer's proposal of 16,500 additional engineering.
Okay, got you. I'll second that.
Motion was made supported to approve the additional engineering funds stated. Any further discussion on that motion? Ann, another roll, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Ellen McManus?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
And Joel McManus?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks for all your work.
Well, no, no, I'll say it again. No more changes, so I get my stuff done. We want this done.
And I think, I think Molly's point, or whoever made the point, well, the quicker their, Lainey's, the quicker the better, you know, as soon as we can get this.
Yeah.
Well, the look on her face at Monday night, and my face, was like.
Uh, okay, we're moving the bathroom.
She had no idea they wanted to change the bathroom site or anything like that.
We put this great amenity over there, and people are using the heck out of it, and there's.
No, it's awesome. It is awesome.
It's great, but it's like, wow, we got the cart before the horse a little bit.
Yeah, exactly.
But it was putting tarp over the playground, not letting anybody use it or something like that. No, I'm just kidding, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the direction.
Yep. Thanks for all your help, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Next item, item 8E, consideration of Resolution 2025-12-T recommending approval of the Class C redevelopment RDA liquor license to Travers Racing LLC K1 Speed. Chris, I believe this one's yours, right?
This is another thing we've been working on for a while, and I included a letter in the packet that clearly explains all the information to help you make your decision. And I think, I guess if you have some questions, I just need a motion to approve that resolution. And then K1 Speed or Travers Racing LLC can take the resolution, they can take the affidavit to certify the investment, and then the map that we put together for redevelopment area, they can turn that into the Liquor Control Commission and apply for the license. I mentioned earlier in my report, the High Tops quota license, one of the criteria is that there can't be one of those that exist if you do this. So hopefully, with timing and everything, High Tops will grab that quota, and then this will be available for K1. It won't be, create a conflict. So, and that's pretty much all I have, but if you have questions, I'll certainly answer them.
This one's been, I think about the third or fourth time it's come around to us. And they've, they've proven all affidavits and all the investments, we've qualified, all that's done. So now we're actually ready to apply the license, so.
Sure. I'll make the motion that Resolution 2025-12-T be approved, recommending that Travers Racing LLC be considered for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control for a Class C redevelopment liquor license to be located at 1212 West South Airport Road, Traverse City.
Support.
Motion made supported to approve Resolution 2025-12-T. Any further discussion on that motion? Ann, can we have a roll on that, please?
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Ellen McManus?
Yes.
Jane McManus?
Yes. Thank you. All right. And then, as we move forward, Chris, are there going to be other licenses potentially available? Is that based on future investment as well?
Correct. It has to be half of the original investment. So the original investment's about 20,000. So the additional 10, 20 million, additional 10 million will open up another license. And then another percentage more will open up a third.
Okay. So I think, I just asked that, maybe we come up with a, I know that there's been another tenant over there that, you know, hey, boy, you know, there's liquor license, I'd like to be selling margaritas, my tacos, you know. So what's our process going to be to decide any future ones? And have we already done that? Do we already have that?
We did. We have a committee. And our committee met, it's the zoning, the planning, a commissioner, and myself, the clerk. And we all met, and we discussed.
That's where we came up with this one, right?
We did on this one. So we'll meet again, if another one becomes available, and they need to submit an application to us. Actually, this was the only application that came.
Actually, the dog park business wanted to be considered as well.
But they didn't put an application in?
They, they did, yeah.
Oh, they did?
Yep.
Okay.
But as long as we have a process going forward, so we know the next person that comes in, okay, here's the process, you know, apply, and then you'll be considered the next time one comes available.
I think this one is pretty easy because he's the one who brought it all together.
Oh, yeah.
He made a huge investment, and he nailed down the numbers.
Yeah. And that was where I thought, he made a lot of investment and started a process. It made, this one made perfect sense as far as I'm concerned. But just so we, as long as we got a process, we're comfortable going forward.
So this one was brought to us by the business owners, so we leaned heavily on them to coordinate the efforts. I think going forward, as it expands, we'll just communicate with all the businesses who don't have one and say, hey, this opportunity has come up. If you're interested, apply. So that way, nobody feels like they're left out. So that's my plan in the future.
Yeah, great. Appreciate it. Okay, item 8F, discussion on new SDM license, liquor license, excuse me, for Outback Steakhouse. Who's going to tackle this one?
I'll speak on it. Again, these come to us as a letter from Liquor Control saying that they're applying for it, and if you have an opinion from the township, we'll consider it when we were, we'll either approve or deny this. Way back in the day, there always used to be local government approval needed, but MLCC tried to streamline the process for, to be business friendly. So they just let you know about it. If you do nothing, then they're not going to consider anything. But if you have an issue, you need to let them know, and they'll consider it when making their decision. I've never heard anything bad about Outback, you know, my time with the township personally, but I don't know if you guys have on your end, and if you want me to enter or send them a letter with an opinion. So that's all I'm asking here, it's just kind of informational. It could be no action, or it could be write them a letter telling them that they, you know, they're too rowdy, you know, on Friday nights, we don't want you to have this, so.
Does SDM mean basically take, I'm sorry, Molly, takeout? They can, so somebody can get a Outback Blooming Onion to go and a six-pack of beer, basically, is what you're saying?
Correct, yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Molly.
Yeah, well, I just had questions about how they're going to do that. What's the plan? Are they going to set up a room where they can have beer coolers and all that stuff? Or is there going to be a drive-through? What's, what's their thinking about how they're going to sell in a restaurant?
So we, we don't get any information about their plan, we just get notified about their application. But I think what you would find is it would be on a menu as available item to sell. Like, if you wanted to leave with a bottle of wine or through takeout, which I've done before, you could buy it through takeout now. Whereas you can't, you have to drink it while you're there. So I think it's just to increase business. And with the pandemic and everything being takeout, they're just trying to increase their business and change their model a little bit. Just my speculation.
When I worked in a bar, we would put a six-pack in a paper bag.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah. So when you're checking out, you finished your meal, you just want to take a six-pack with you to go home, or a couple of margaritas.
Yeah, you could do that now with this license, where now it has to be on premise.
Because Applebee's has it now. Do they have this license?
Oh, they have a license, so they can sell.
And really, it's just, it's the Liquor Control Commission's decision. We're only able to weigh in as an opinion if we have a concern with it.
Correct.
No.
So it's going to happen. We don't say anything, it's just going to happen. It's not our decision, it's just, you know, nobody has any problem with it.
Applebee's hasn't been a problem since they've been doing it, so why not let Outback do it?
I'm sure these businesses are pretty vetted in making sure they're covering themselves as far as.
Absolutely.
You know, not selling to minors and things, because they're reliable people, so.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any issue with it, Chris? Go ahead.
It just, you know, I talked about those quota licenses out there, the SDM, I think there was three of them. I don't even know that they know that that's there, and they could seek that. I don't even know if they're paying for this one. I guess I'll connect with them just to see if they are aware of that.
Why do you, why, why should you do that?
It's not your job.
Yeah, I guess.
Not your, not your prob, no. I wouldn't do that.
Okay.
Because then everybody else is going to say, why do you?
Yeah, why don't you, uh?
I mean, you can tell everybody?
Expeirs.
Are you going to tell everybody that they're out there? Are you going to tell every restaurant that they're out there?
No, we just talked about that.
You can go on the webpage, and it will tell you that.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's why Chris shouldn't be doing it. The webpage should be doing it.
Yeah.
I mean, does anybody, if nobody has any problem, it would just be an issue, we just move on, so.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. Thank you, Chris, for that. All right. We, brings us to our next public comment, so I'm sure that our public is just waiting to get up here and talk some more this evening, so. Public comment is open, and I don't see anybody coming up, so public